Okay, Ryan, we've gone on. Okay.
It's starting right now.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's we'll reconvene the the meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight's agenda is really focused on the budget hearing of the budget that we approved back in March. It was a long time ago, but we did, and which will then take us to the public vote on May 18. But before we dive into the agenda, I just really wanted to take a moment to thank Roy and Rachel and a host of other people for an event that happened to me like 24 or 48 hours ago. I had a parent who approached me and said, I'd really like you to send a message to Roy and to Rachel. And of course, you always go, oh, what's going to happen? But she said, no, I really, really want to thank you from the bottom of the heart for keeping the school open. And she literally had tears in her eyes as she told with told me some personal things about her family and her children and how much stability and comfort that was brought to those children, because you had the will to keep the school open and made it happen. And I was also reflecting back on, I have family in Seattle, that their kids were remote for an entire year. And we are just blessed that we have you two and the team that supports you and all the teachers and the union and the whole system that worked together to keep our school open this year. I just wanted to take a moment before we delve into this meeting to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because I know it's kind of our norm now, and you guys see it every day. But I think to stop and just pause and remember that a lot of kids aren't going to school, weren't going to school every day like our children were. And it is all because of the great leadership team and the teachers and the whole system, down to the janitors. I mean, everybody made it work. And so a big thank you, thank you, thank you from the community and from the board.
Thank you, Arlene. You know, it's a great team that we have. You're right. It's absolutely great team and made it all work and the community and the foundation as well. So but thank you for those comments.
Correct. Agreed. A total system that made it work. So one of the first things on our agenda today is to take a motion on an action, on a submission of a voter proposition that came in for the May 18 vote in the election. And before I go in and kind of explain this, I do want to share with the public that as a board, we are very interested in the notion that is embedded in this proposition, which is to have a student be a part of the Board of Education in some form. And so Roy and I are committed to working on this topic for the for over the summer. And we'll be bringing a proposal back to the board in the fall. But regarding this motion that we received on April 30, which was, I'm sorry, a proposition that we received on April 30 to be placed before the voters regarding having a student rep on the Board of Education. That voter voter proposition needed to come in 30 days before the annual meeting and needed to contain a minimum number of signatures, both of which those two criterias were not met. And so the resolution before the board is in the agenda. And it is that we ratify and endorse and adopt the determination of the district clerk to reject the April 30, 2021 proposition as untimely and for failure to comply with the signature requirements contained within the Board of Education Policy 2015. Do we have a motion? Mike, yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
Any conversation or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstentions, sorry. All right. Thank you for that. And as I mentioned before, we will address the underlying concept over the summer. Also, next on the agenda is the approval of the draft minutes of the meeting from April 20. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
So I hear Tom and John, Connie. Any comments or edits? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Carlin? Turn it over to you.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. We are at the public hearing stage of the 2021-22 budget, upon which a referendum will be held on May 18 from 7:00 to 9:00 in the 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Blue Gym. My plan is to quickly review the budget and then time will be allocated for any public comment. If if there is any. And let's start the slideshow. So here we are at the end. In about 10 days or so, we will be having a referendum. And not only on the budget, but there's also a question for extending our our reserve for capital projects, which I think we've used very effectively over the last decade for another decade. Our enrollment is fairly stable with a slight decline over the last five years. We're projecting 1,604 for next year. And those those changes are reflected on all different levels throughout the school. Our proposed budget is $50,618,988. That's a budget increase from the prior year of 1.04% and a tax levy increase of 1.69%. Our calculated tax levy cap is 1.71%, so this puts us about $11,000 under the cap. And you can see this budget is kind of the average of where we've been over the last decade. Been a little higher and we've been a little lower. So all the work the board's put in over the last three months is kind of slotted us right where we've been all along. The obligatory pie chart, which shows that about 75% of our budget is in salaries and benefits. That's the blue portion of the of the pie chart. The next largest is contractual codes, which includes transportation, legal services, all kinds of consultants for special education and anything like that, and then debt service. And and, you know, obviously, we're a people oriented business, so 75% is salaries and benefits. What changed? Personnel is about up about 1%. Contractual is down about 4.5% due primarily to the option we chose as far as dropping our flood insurance and relying on our own reserves and fund balance to fund future losses and also relying on the mitigation efforts that both FEMA, the town and the school district has undertaken over the last few years. We have five pumps up and running. We don't feel that the market is adequately pricing that risk. So we're absorbing that ourselves. The tuition is up about 11%. That's special education tuition. It's just a function of a strict function of what IEPs require, where we send students out of district. BOCES is up. Most of that is due to services we require. A lot of that is on the technology side, seeing as though we've been very reliant on them over the last year to get us through the pandemic and replacing hardware as needed. And and benefits, mostly due to the teacher's retirement system increase and also health insurance escalation. On the revenue side, we're seeing a reduction in interest. And a reduction also in state aid. We expect the state aid the following year to kick in. If we finish our capital project, which we anticipate doing so in the current year and get our final cost report submitted, we expect that aid to be replaced in the next year. So we're hoping it's only a one-year reduction and we'll be back. And other than that, everything is pretty much the same with the exception of appropriated fund balance. There's an extra $300,000 in the current year. We thought we were going to have to reduce reserves to fund that. But it looks like we might get there through current year surplus. And I'll explain a little bit of that later on when I do our current year financial report. Here's how we develop our tax levy. We have our proposed budget. We collect $5.2 million in revenue other than property tax. So we need to find $45.4 million somewhere. If we put that all on the back of the tax levy, it would be a 3.5% increase. However, we are using our current year surplus mostly. And and beyond that, if we don't make 800,000, we will be reducing our reserves to fund that additional 800,000 to reduce our tax levy to 44.6 million roughly. And again, that's a 1.69% increase in the levy and it's $11,000 under the cap, to reiterate. Let's see. The estimated tax rate for taxpayers in Bronxville, we take our budget. We calculate the tax levy at $44.6 million. Then we look at the assessment rolls, which are up slightly at 3.13 billion. That's a $10 million increase in the assessment roll, which calculates to a tax rate of $14.24 per thousand of assessed value, which is a 1.34% increase in the tax rate from the current year we're in now. And based on that preliminary tax rate, this represents an increase in somebody's taxes, all other things being equal, of about $189 per $1 million of assessed value on a home. And just to give an indication of where that rate fits historically, we've been higher in the past. Back in 1415, we were higher. But it's kind of averaging between, you know, 13.3 and 14.3 over that period of time. And that's all I have. So at this point, if anybody on Zoom would like to comment on the budget, now is their chance.
Connie, do we have anybody in the queue?
So for the members of the public, they're on YouTube.
Yep. Is there any comments coming in off of YouTube?
I don't see any comments coming in.
Okay.
And that's a wrap.
Thank you, Dan.
So I would just encourage all members of the community to come out and vote. There's going to be a separate entrance off of Meadow Avenue for the Blue Gym. They will not be entering the school other than the Blue Gym. So there'll be plenty of parking out front on Meadow Avenue. Zoom right in, park in the metered spots, vote and zoom right out.
And Dan, mask required. We'll keep six feet distance. All that protocol will be in place.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much, Dan. And Roy, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. Good evening, everybody. Just a brief report tonight. Been starting these all off with our COVID updates and things of that nature. And, you know, fortunately, the COVID update has been really, really positive news, not only for our school, but I think the community's infection rate is way down as well as Westchester and the state of New York. But we haven't had, knock on wood, positive cases in the last week or two. And that's been that's been really terrific. So whatever people are doing, please continue to do that. I guess the vaccinations are seem to be working. And now that they've approved them for children 12 and over, I hope that people consider that as well to to develop that herd immunity. But all good news on that front. Very quickly, on the elementary principal search, we received a little over 70 applicants for the position. We've done some paper screening and the first round of interviews will take place starting Monday with our initial committee. We anticipate having three rounds of interviews. The initial committee, which is a relatively large committee made up of parents, teachers, administrators, board members. And then the second round, where we got to the semifinal stage, we're hoping to have three separate groups. A parent group, a teacher group, or staff group, I should say, and administrative group. And then whatever finalists we might have, hopefully, we'll have a final board interview as well. So throughout that process, we'll be vetting out candidates, checking references, et cetera, et cetera. I'm confident we'll find a good person, quality person. And with any luck, we'll have them approved at the June board meeting in time to come to Bronxville over the summer. So we're right on our timeline and I think we'll be, hopefully, we'll be fine moving forward. Remind everybody that this Thursday, that May 13, or next Thursday, I should say, May 13, beginning at 5:30, the board will be having a workshop on the DEI work that's been going on and how it reflects on state standards, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed about where we are and what our current thinking is. As you know, the board has talked about in the past and felt that trying to do it at a regular board meeting would be too difficult, given the time parameters and the importance of the topic. So we decided to do a workshop format, which will give the opportunity for the board to have a full discussion about it and members of public will be invited to to watch that as well. And good news, you know, you've probably seen the article in Low Heart about from the U.S. News and World Report article that honored Bronxville High School as the number 13 high school in the state of New York and number 145th top school in the United States. I happen to think we're much better than that, but that's my opinion. But it's a nice honor that, you know, is a reflection of the wonderful work that our teachers and administrators do at the high school. And not not only reflect the high school, but, you know, high schools get their students from the elementary and middle school. So it really is a K-12 effort to get any kind of recognition like that. But it's my understanding that Bronxville was the top high school in Westchester. And I believe the top high school outside of New York City is well honored in terms of the state. So it's a nice list to be on when you're on it. And when you're not on it, it's not a nice list. So we'll take it for this year for what it's worth and hope to continue that in the future. But really, congratulations to Ann Meyer and the entire staff, not only Natalie at the high school, but really the entire staff. And finally, as Dan mentioned, we have our budget vote. And I, you know, just ask people to come out to vote for the for the budget as well as our board of election, because we have a competitive race this year. So please pay attention to the candidates and make a make your choice accordingly. So with that, Arlene, that's pretty much my report. I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. And thanks. Once again, congratulations on those rankings. That is very, very, very impressive and a credit to you as well as as everyone you mentioned. And come out and vote, please.
Arlene.
Yeah.
I, Roy, if I'm not mistaken, those rankings now include all of the magnet and selective schools like Stuyvesant. So it's really not comparing apples to apples anymore.
That's correct, Jack. You're right. And that's why you see many of the top schools are those specialized type academies.
Right. They were. So that even makes the congratulations more special. Great. Okay, thank you again. Rachel, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. The administrators have been busy. This is prime hiring season. And as you recall, we have a number of retirements which are resulting in new hires. So you saw quite a few on the last board agenda. We have some more tonight. And we'll have some more next month as well. So you have before you, the first resolution is that we look forward to welcoming a new middle school social studies teacher. And then we have a number of leaves and overages that are connected to personnel issues that we were able to discuss in prior executive sessions. As a result of the leaves and the personnel issues, you'll see a number of changes as it relates to the curriculum leaders, to team leaders and the overages. In addition, I'm asking you to approve this evening the extension of a regular substitute appointment. In addition, Connie has asked for us to add one more person to the election personnel to make sure we have backup if needed. And then there was one revision to the non-union hourly staff schedule to to pull it up to what is now minimum wage, which changed January 1. And then a revision to the co-curricular advisors as well as one revision to the spring coach roster. So I ask for you to consider resolutions A through T this evening.
We have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Back to you, Dan.
I mentioned my our current year financial projection. We have the month of March closed. And as I mentioned last month, it's been a challenging year for surplus projection as we've gone from projecting a $500,000 deficit over the summer and into the early fall to what now looks to be a surplus in line with what we've experienced in prior years. The initial tale of woe was directly related to a potential 20% cut in aid that we were told by the governor to anticipate this year. That did not materialize as funding from the federal government came through recently, as well as sales tax revenue reductions we were warned against, which rebounded far quicker than anybody anticipated. Furthermore, we're also seeing someone anticipated expenditure reductions in athletics, co-curricular and other programs directly related to restricted activities as the pandemic persists. The overall pattern of consumption has shifted as we make our way through this pandemic year. And I'm hopeful for return to normalcy for activities and experiences and finances next year. The surplus I'm projecting now is 700,000 and it's likely to increase to at least cover what we're allocating towards reducing next year's tax levy in our budget. That figure is 800,000. I would anticipate the surplus gets around there by the end of the year. And, you know, that was necessary to help keep us under the tax levy cap, avoiding significant program cuts. So, you know, that's some decent news, which it's going to be a more normal year financially than we anticipated, which I'll take normal as good news in anything. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dan, on the on the report in the fund balances, it says it has a preliminary 63020 and then it says projected 63020. Is that 21?
No, it's 21. It's definitely 21, John.
Okay. And so the 90, what's the negative 92,000?
That's the difference between what's on the financial report.
Okay, I got it. It's 800 in the 700.
The difference between 800 and 707. And that's likely to disappear as we close the year by June.
And then the 6,600,000 debt service fund balance is at 63020 or 21?
21.
And so that's just buildup of cash from the bonds in order to pay for construction. So we should be all.
It's it's premiums more than anything else. It's the premiums we got on the bonds are reflected in there. You know, we it's very interesting, the way we sold the bonds. We close and they throw cash at you.
Yeah, you sell them at a premium. I got it. I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Dan, the the state in the budget seemed to indicate it was hard for me completely to follow it. But they were going to go back retroactively and say that all the state aid that we've ever been paying for, I don't know how many years, we found a pot of money, I'm going to pay that out over the next three or four years, I think, what I read. I couldn't really follow it, but any impact that you're estimating, or is it too hard to tell at this point?
There's a couple of things. A, it's too hard to tell at this point. And B, state aid is such a small portion of our budget. You know, it's it's 5% of our budget, whereas other districts, it can be as much as 70%. So that kind of impact would be negligible for us, if anything, but we'll take whatever we can get.
Yeah, but they seem to indicate, so, yeah, you know, this pattern I have, but basically the state aided a formula. And what I gathered was the formula was they weren't, you get a formula number and then the state would just decide whatever number they wanted. It wouldn't really do the formula number.
So I'll have to check. We may have been held harmless on some of those calculations over the years.
Okay.
So it may have may not impact us as much. But I'll look into it.
Am I reading it right, when basically you said, the formula said, you know, I'll just put a number, 700,000 is going to to our district. Well, we're just going to give you 500,000 and that other 200,000 goes on. But what the state did this time, they said, we're going to actually follow the formula. And by the way, that 200,000 you didn't get in prior years, we're going to give you that in some type of period of time. And I thought it was somewhere between three and five years.
I'd be glad to see it because, you know, we see our our state aid going down with the construction projects coming off. And we think it's going to come back up to where it has been. But, you know, we'll take anything they give us. But I don't have any further details on that at the moment.
Mike, I believe that's what they said they were going to do.
Yeah, that's it sounds familiar, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they said. I mean, but they've been saying this as far as I've been on the board. It seems like every year, but this time they actually put money in the budget. That was this time around. And so I said, well, even if it's it's minimal, at least it could be something next year that we may have coming away. I just don't, I don't know what the the impact would be.
Yeah, Mike, I recall there was actually a spreadsheet attached, at least to one of the articles that even had the amount that was coming to Bronxville.
Yeah, I think that was federal aid.
Yeah, that was federal.
That was the federal aid. Okay.
Yeah, now this is something the state had been doing.
Okay.
A while.
So there could be some upside coming to us next in the next school year.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Dan. It's it's probably not a big number. But like you said, if if there is something coming our way, we ought to try to figure out what that might be.
And make sure we get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the biggest thing is that we're not going to take a haircut, which was a real possibility.
Last time this year, yeah, Jack, I think last time this year, we were afraid of that.
Yes.
And it was like 20%. It was a big number.
Yes.
Okay, Dan, you want to take us to the risk assessment and recommended audit plan?
Sure. Our audit committee met yesterday with our internal auditor, Acum Partners. They reviewed the update with the audit committee earlier yesterday. And although all risk levels remained either low or medium with no changes in the overall risk level, the board members and the committee, the committee expressed concern with slight increases in some areas due to changes in federal funding levels and the dates since the last focus areas of those audits. It was the consensus of the committee that budget, financial accounting and reporting be the next focus area for the internal audit based on the period of time elapsed since the area was last audited and by the overall significance of the area to the financial health of the district. There's a resolution to accept the risk assessment update and recommend budget, financial, accounting and reporting to be the focus area of the next audit.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any? Yeah. Any further conversation? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Dan, the first is yours.
Uh, there's no financial action items. Uh, so I'll go straight to the uh, facilities update. And if uh, you can see around campus that uh, Nyram is slowly moving out of the uh, their last area they have in the front by uh, the four corners. Uh, they've put some grass seed down and taken some of their gravel away and are, are, are kind of uh, uh, reducing their footprint in their staging areas. Um, we're pretty much down to completion of the atrium lobby, uh, which we're expecting over the next few weeks. Uh, we're still seeing delays in punch list items. Uh, doors, hardware and other specialty items, you know, this is on top of the delays we had in wood delivery. Uh, these items are tough to procure um, because of uh, pandemic-related backlog orders in the supply pipeline throughout the industry. Um, the next focus, uh, once we get the atrium lobby completed, will be on some hallway flooring on the third and fourth floors uh, that which require as uh, asbestos abatement and replacement of tiles. Uh, and we're gonna do that over the summer. Um, because we heard from our architects that the gymnasium bulkhead removal project will not be feasible due to uh, the unanticipated existence of large roof truss in the bulkhead. Basically, we'd have to rip the roof off and rip off the truss and replace the truss if we wanna get rid of that bulkhead going across the um, the middle of the uh, gymnasium. And it's, it's just not financially feasible. Uh, the facilities committee consensus was uh, you know, why waste that money when we wouldn't be gaining uh, any ceiling height? Uh, you know, we could remove the, the, the outside of that bulkhead, but the truss would still be there. And we would, you know, we'd still be hitting the ceiling on last second shots anyway. Um,
Dan, we should make the point that those floors were in the scope of the original project.
Absolutely. And uh, you know, this is uh, any remaining contingency or uh, or uh, unspent funds, you know, we'll be tapping that to add this back in from the original scope. That was, we, we had cut it out to kind of save money along the way. But since uh, you know, the project was managed well, um, we didn't run, we didn't use all of our contingency funds. So we, we, we think this is a a good project. You know, anytime we can get asbestos out of the building, it's uh, we're happy to do so. And, and these floors are, are truly in bad shape. So we think it's a good summer project.
Okay. Great. Any, any comments or questions for Dan?
Well, there was, there was one thing I think we discussed, didn't we, Dan, that um, we were gonna approach the contractor and, and seek some assurance that the work can be done within the summer and we're not approaching Labor Day weekend with asbestos work going on, right?
No, no, we would never do that.
Yeah, that would be bad.
It'd be a bad thing. Okay.
And these are, these are also isolated that uh, it's not gonna impact summer special ed classes or uh, anybody else using the building, you know, uh, fall athletics or anything like that because it's located on the third and fourth floor and we can isolate that.
Great. Thank you, Dan. And thanks to the facilities committee that supported Dan through this whole entire project and has brought us to this great place. And I think we all share the disappointment in the ceiling of the gym, but as someone said earlier, it is what it is.
Are they, that's a quick question for
Sure.
On the hardware punch lists and the other kind of various things, is that gonna prevent the opening and use of the atrium and other spaces that are substantially done?
No, no, it do, a lot of it is we have temporary doors and temporary hardware in. You know, it's just, which make it everything usable, but it's not the finished product yet. What was slowing us down in the atrium is we couldn't get the white oak that we were using for the finishes on the walls and the benches and, and all that. We finally got that in last week.
And so is the guidance department, has they, have they moved down to the new facility?
Yep.
Yeah, they've been in there for weeks now.
Or have we, have we reclaimed the old, uh, the old classroom?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I, I offered to the board members, I had a chance. I forget why I was there, got a tour recently and it's really looking great. So if you have a chance, it's, it's a, a nice thing to do to swing by and see all the changes. Looking great. Rachel, you wanna bring us home with the agenda item nine?
Yes, um, this is a resolution um, for, as you know, we are very fortunate to be able to educate um, our students with disabilities in special classes here in our district. And it allows our uh, resident children to be able to stay in the Bronxville school. As a result, it allows for us to have openings in those classes to offer to um, students with disabilities from neighboring school districts. And uh, we are very selective um, in, in the review of those packets. And if we feel that a child from another school district would be appropriate for one of our special classes, we accept them and we enter into a contract with them. And this resolution allows um, after our attorney reviews that contract allows um, or authorizes the board president um, and or Roy as superintendent to um, sign those contracts. So we will typically see this now at our reorganization meeting in July um, effective for the year. But we wanted to make sure we got it in now for the remainder of this year, just in case there are any changes to existing contracts.
Once again, you enter into these after you've evaluated the student and are you, you are sure that it is in the best interest of the other students who are already here and the one that's considering coming in. So it's a very thoughtful process. And we're talking onesies and twosies, not hundreds.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion as it appears in the agenda?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks, everybody. As, as to the committee reports, we've heard from audit, I heard from facilities. Has, did finance committee meet since our last board meeting?
No, we'll be probably meeting uh, in June.
Okay. So our next meeting is um, Tuesday, May eighteenth, when we get together after the vote at nine thirty um, to accept the vote. So we'll see you then. And we have the thirteenth, we have the workshop at five thirty. And um, so with that, I think Connie, we've covered everything, have we not?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, any other public discussion in the queues?
Nothing's in the queue.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dan. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
And Mike.
All in favor? Aye. Nobody's ever opposed. So thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.